Okay, my clock turns six thirty and I see that we have a quorum of the city council, city of Hillsborough present in the room. So I will call the meeting of the city council, city of Hillsborough to order. First thing up for tonight is I will actually now call into order our two thousand twenty-five revenue neutral rate hearing. And so that hearing is now in session. Is everybody aware of what we mean by revenue neutral rate? Okay? Is there anyone from the public that would care to comment at this time regarding the revenue neutral rate? See anybody online? Jane's quiet, so. Now we will then move on to the consideration of the resolution number two thousand twenty-four dash oh seven, which should be in front of you. This is a resolution of the city of Hillsborough, Kansas, levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. Whereas the revenue neutral rate for the city of Hillsborough was calculated as thirty-seven point nine three six mils by the Marion County Clerk. And whereas the budget proposed by the governing body of the city of Hillsborough will require the levy of a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate. And whereas the governing body held a hearing on September three, two thousand twenty-four, allowing all interested taxpayers desiring to be heard an opportunity to give oral testimony. And whereas the governing body of the city of Hillsborough, having heard testimony, still finds it necessary to exceed the revenue neutral rate. Now therefore be it resolved by the governing body of the city of Hillsborough. The city of Hillsborough shall levy a property tax rate exceeding the revenue neutral rate of thirty-seven point nine three six mils. This resolution shall take effect and be enforced immediately upon its adoption and shall remain in effect until future action is taken by the governing body. Are there any questions? Any comments? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to adopt resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven. Councilman Wilkins moves.
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we will poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
Okay, the roll call vote, uh, the is four zero, the eyes have it. And resolution two thousand twenty-four dash zero seven is hereby adopted this third day of September two thousand twenty-four by the governing body of Hillsborough, Kansas, and will be signed by the mayor. Thank you very much. We will now adjourn that, uh, that hearing and we will move into our second hearing of the evening, which is our two thousand twenty-five budget hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to address the budget? Want to make sure we give plenty of time. Just in, in the full transparency, I did receive a call over the weekend from a, from a citizen that wanted to be heard, but and I advised them to show up tonight at six thirty and they would be heard and they have not shown up yet. So at this point, uh, I will close the public comment portion of, of that hearing and we will move into the consideration of the budget. Now turn it over to Mr. Stiles.
Yes, sir. So nothing's changed since the last time we've talked about the budget. Uh, it comes in at forty point nine nine eight mils, uh, which is decreased from what we originally talked about. Uh, it's about three minutes, just over three mils above the revenue neutral rate. Total spend on that is twelve million, four hundred eighty-six thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three thousand, eight hundred and eighty-three hundred, I'm sorry. Um, so yeah, total there, uh, mill levy fund amount of mill levy at Bull Room Tax is nine hundred and thirty-eight thousand, one hundred and ninety-eight. Includes one mill for recreation, uh, one mill for, uh, the industrial, uh, one special law enforcement mill, four mills for the library, a little over five for the debt service and the rest. Uh, it's twenty-eight point nine five eight goes into the general fund, so. Uh, all that information is in there as it's been, we've had it on the agenda several times, but, um, yeah, be more than happy to answer any questions you may have about that.
Any comments, questions from the council? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to approve and adopt the two thousand twenty-five budget as submitted.
I'll make that motion.
Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman By seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll poll the council. Councilman By?
Yes.
Councilman Jorgensen?
Yes.
Councilman Wilkins?
Yes.
Councilman McCarty?
Yes.
With a vote of four oh by the council, the budget is hereby adopted as submitted. And I appreciate all the hard work that went into preparing the budget and the consideration of the council. So we are going to move on and we are going to get to our consent agenda at this time. Under consent agenda, we have vouchers totaling two hundred ninety-five thousand, seven hundred sixty-three dollars, eighteen cents. Did everyone receive copies of the vouchers? Were there any questions regarding the vouchers? We also have minutes from the August twenty, two thousand twenty-four regular meeting. There is one correction to the minutes, uh, in the statement underneath the date. It, it refers to the date as being August sixth. That is incorrect and, and will be amended to August twenty. Are there any other corrections or questions to the minutes? Hearing none, I would, uh, accept a motion to approve the consent agenda with the minutes amended as, as identified. Councilman By moves. Is there a second? Councilman McCarty seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We are now to our first or another opportunity for public comment. And, uh, is there anybody that would like from the public that would like to address the council? Okay, hearing none, we are going to move on to an annual department head update. And tonight we have Mr. David Edgar as head of our Parks and Rec Department. Mr. Edgar, you'll come stand up here, please.
First of all, obviously my first time doing this, so if you have questions, all right, me or whatever. But I'd like to thank you guys for allowing me to come and, and share what's going on in our department. Um, it's, it's truly an honor for me to be on this role. It's, uh, it's been, it's just been outstanding. I've really enjoyed my time. It's been refreshing for me myself and special thanks to Matt and Lou for giving me that opportunity. I wanted to just let you guys know, I don't, you know, I'm sure you hear this, but you've got a great crew and working in the city. I mean, I, I see the Dells here and I had Dale and Todd and Ben and others have been instrumental in really helping me uh, get rolling and helping me out. Uh, the ladies in the office are top notch and others as well. But, um, I just wanted to let you guys know, you got a great crew that work here. They work well together and and they've really helped me in my transition. A couple of things, just to kind of give you updates on, um, from the recreation, I'll kind of hit all my areas real quick. I know Matt said fifteen minutes the most, so I'll watch that and. But, uh, most of you know, we have the Cal Ripken tournament here, uh, the state tournament. And, uh, I told Matt when I took the job, I'll take it, but I will be gone then because my in-laws had already planned their big five-year anniversary. And he thought that was a good idea. He didn't want me sleeping in his, his room with, you know, so his house. So I was gone, but I got back on Sunday, but we did a lot of legwork ahead of time. And I'll tell you, I had so many compliments, I got to talk to every community but one who was already gone when I got back on Sunday and they just couldn't believe our community. They just couldn't believe, uh, the teams hosts we had, that all we did is pick the phone up, made a few calls and people were there and they were all awesome. Uh, they just said, we couldn't do that in our community. We wouldn't have the people that did it and do it as well as your people did it. So those guys did a great job. They loved our facilities. In fact, uh, the, the kind of the league team moved on to Colorado and I got a response from, uh, Leanne. Linda said, you guys should be very proud. Your facilities are better than the ones in Denver. She said, you guys ran this way better. Your communication was way better. So Nate Dooler really ran a lot of that, um, and, uh, Jeff Brewer did the field work between the games and, and he did ask me, um, if we would host ten and twelve-year-olds the same weekend. And I said, absolutely. Didn't even think, but I just said, we'll do it. And then I thought, that's actually a pretty good idea if you think about it. Uh, but then he said, well, there's four communities that want them, so, um, he said, I really want you to have one. Which one do you want? And I said, it doesn't matter. Give us whichever. And how can we get softball? Cause I know softball parents are going to be wanting that as well. So he's going to put me in touch with them. So next year I'm crossing my fingers that we do get one again, if not more than one. Uh, but we'll try that. I just think it brings a lot of people into our community and brings a lot of people here and, and money into our places. Uh, one of the people I talked to said they had to leave the Mexican restaurant Friday after about a twenty-five minute wait because they couldn't get in. It said it was so full. Few bucks. It wasn't a lot, but we got that place really sharp and looking, looking good. Um, just so you know, I mean, overall, I'm estimating, I still had one food bill. I'm still kind of a guest on, but we, we probably netted a little over, uh, sixty-six hundred dollars from that tournament. We had sixty-three hundred in sponsorships miscellaneous between shirt sales, ticket sales, the opening picnic sales programs, concessions. Uh, we, over sixty-seven hundred and we had some bills, umpires about sixteen hundred, press box crew is about thirty-six hundred. And then some miscellaneous things like that. To put on a clinic for the kids. I had Coach Stanford do that. That was a huge hit. And they said the coaches loved it. They hooked a lot of drills and different things they could do with their kids. Um, had to pay the fee to the state, had to buy room for the, the head state guy and some other things like that. We, we did some things. One night we had groups go bowling. Excuse me, one pool go bowling, the other pool go the pool. And the next night we flipped them, otherwise we couldn't house that many kids at one time. So we, we made some notes on some things. We'll do a little different next year, but that went really well. And again, the people were just, they were, they were really surprised that Little Hillsborough did, did that. So I thought it went really well and thanks to everybody who helped with that. Um, just to come to the current programs right now, like we have eight, eight students listed in the ballet, three in jazz. Um, our flag football, first and second graders, we have twenty-eight, so that's three teams. Um, third and fourth, twenty-six is three teams and fifth and sixth is twenty-two and that's three teams. The twenty-two is cutting it kind of close with seven, but, um, they'd rather do that and maybe play with six once in a while than have too many on a team and then they, the kids sit. And so we've always had two teams, so having three in each division is good. There's seven total in the first and second grade. Um, two from Marion, a Canton Galva and a Peabody, three, uh, the same number, seven in third and fourth. Two Marion, Canton Galva, Galva and Gossel, and then the sixth grade, there's two Marion, Gossel, and then of course our teams. So volleyball right now, um, just so you know, third grade is five, fourth is seven, fifth is seven and sixth is ten. And I think we've got about four more in today. I think that we need to add to that. So that runs through Marion, that, that league there. So that's kind of where we are on some current programs. Um, just so you know, I know Kara did send me some stuff on the pool. I'm going to read you some of this. Um, you're, you, uh, and you probably know as much about it after I read it than I do because, uh, this starting this late and get some things open. She said the pool is open a hundred and one, a hundred and one days, eighty-four regular season. Days open, five partials due to the weather. And then some additional days are open for swim team, toddler time, elementary P E teacher time. Lunch passes, seven hundred and seventy-seven total. That's Monday through Friday. Total memberships, three hundred and sixty-six. Uh, membership check-ins, three thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight. Total day passes sold at four dollars, um, equaled eight thousand, nine hundred and seventy-eight dollars. Um, toddler time average, twenty-eight people, Monday through Friday, twenty-eight a day, floaty time, eleven people. That sounds kind of fun, floaty time. I'll take that right. Uh, but it's, uh, eleven people Saturday and Sunday only and teacher time average about nine plus some lap swimmers. She had a staff of four assistant managers, twenty lifeguards, ten concessions workers, and they also did work concessions at the complex. Um, and Sammy, um, Saunders did a great job of ord- ordering all the concessions. She just had that down. She did a great job. Two water yoga instructors, one water aerobics instructor, two red cross swim instructors and a lifeguard instructor. Swim team had fifty-six swimmers, four coaches. They got second at the meet at Heston and they hosted two meets. They served different groups like Tabor men and women's soccer, Marion County Core, ninety-six kids who attended Marion County Kids Safety Day, Prairie View, uh, six preschool and twenty-four K through twelve kids, Tabor Camp, two hundred and sixty-three elementary students for two days of swimming for each grade, a hundred and forty-one youth members uh, for three M B churches, and that was just recently, fifty-three students from center for a science building project. Then we had a variety of re- of rentals from Tampa, some churches, which one included nineteen baptisms, uh, birthday parties and family gatherings and four H. Some of the projects I did, the replaced total paper holders, soap dispensers, refrigerator, microwave, manager desk for the office, chairs for the staff inside, sound system speakers and some other things inside and a vacuum filter. A repaired irrigation leak on the east side of the pool. And then they moved the irrigation box on the west side of the pool outside of the fence. I know that that one, they keep getting hit every time they got to move something. It breaks it all, so they just decided to move it instead of just keep fixing it all the time. I do know that. I was in on that one. Eight new rescue tubes, new backboard. These are the needs. They need eight new rescue tubes, a new backboard, short lifeguard chair. I think that's a short chair, not for a short lifeguard, fans for chemical rooms and mechanical room. And so I'll be checking with Todd Helmer on a lot of that stuff. Once automated vacuum. And then she says a heart, very heartfelt thank you. The electric street and water departments for all their help this summer. It would not run smooth without their support. I ran through that kind of quick, but those are some numbers. If you guys have any questions on that, I'd answer them the best I could, but. Um, a couple of things, um, if you go through the park, uh, we have a new swing set and that's Dell and his crew put that up when I was vacationing in Branson before the um, tournament got going and we'd had a lot of compliments on our part. We had a lot of people at the tournament saying, this is just great. You got the park right here and you got some ponds around here. They just really liked it, but that was a big hit. Um, we've also Lenseed Oil all the benches down there that, that have not been painted in the past. And my plan right now is to repair a lot of those benches that need it. Some of those boards are getting pretty warped, pretty, uh, I did have one repaired already. Ed went down, repaired one for me. The, the bench was completely off the seat. Uh, but we're going to haul those in, the ones that need it and get some of those repaired. Um, the museums, um, Sue is going to start selling some items in there. So, uh, my wife is kind of an expert on squares, so she's going to go down and help Sue get set up. I delivered it today to Sue. She was ecstatic, um, very happy, um, smiling, all that good stuff. So I told her we'd come in on Monday and help her get set up. She thought that was just great. Um, and she also made Facebook when the Tabor students came down there. She thought that was awesome. I told her, have you seen it? She said, no, but I sent her the picture and that's pretty good. So she had a good time with that. Uh, the bowling alley, we've had some good meetings with Clint and then with the last one was with Clint, Jackie and Becky and Danielle and Matt and I were at that one. We talked about some different things, some ideas, how we can generate some more, um, you know, some more leagues, there's more revenue. One of the things that Becky said is a lot of people will say, man, I wish the league was a little shorter. Thirty-two weeks is very long. That's going to start this coming Monday. So I told her to put out a feeler and start talking to people she knows that, hey, what if we have a sixteen-week league? You know, would, could we get a, a women's league or a men's league or whatever for sixteen weeks? Would that work? I mean, if that's sixteen more nights, it's open, sixteen more times we can sell stuff, sixteen more days, we get people in there. Um, so she's, she's on that right now. Um, also about a youth league. Um, my, my thought is if we can time it up to where the elementary students are done with their P E time, could we do a little four-week league that doesn't take six months? But could we do something that would introduce kids to it or keep them excited about it for a short time? It doesn't wear your parents out. Uh, things like that as well. So we're looking at things like that. Um, talked to Jackie today. Um, I'm going to meet with him next week and see if we, we can get lined out there on some things. But again, the co-ed league starts Monday. And so at the golf course, we've hosted some tourneys this summer. The big challenge cup is the fourteenth and the fifteenth. If you don't know what that is, our club plays Marion's club. So they beat us pretty good the last several years, they said. So we're going to try to win it on our home, home course this year. So we'll see how that happens. Um, the Hillsborough Marion Tourney had a hundred and forty-four golfers, so a couple of weeks ago that was busy. So they, and they play in Marion on day one, then you qualify for day two and you play in the morning or you play in the afternoon to come on your flight. But a hundred and forty-four golfers is a lot. Uh, the senior tourney was last week. We had fifty-two golfers. And then we did, we've had a lot of equipment problems there this summer. I know some of them's getting older, um, so they're trying to step with that the very best they can. And we're just working through some things at the golf course right now. So questions on any of that stuff? Oh, I got one more thing to cover. Um, some of the projects, just so you know, um, irrigation hadn't, had not been turned on like, I don't know for how long. So we turned it on and realized there was thirty-two heads that had to be changed. Um, we fixed a couple of leaks. Um, we have another leak right now, uh, not really a leak, but it's, it's probably a, uh, this is a minor fix on the inside, uh, that we need to, the diaphragm's not working right is what he said, so he's going to get on that. Um, and a lot of equipment problems, uh, not equipment problems out there, but just a lot of trying to get things organized. We've tried to, uh, not going to say anything, but, but it's been a process trying to get the office organized and the, the stuff organized out there. Um, so it's been a challenge. So if you go out there and you see the pavilions being enclosed a little bit, we're still going to have plenty of room there for the four tables for people to sit under. By watching and talking with people, not a lot of people sit there. So we're going to enclose two more pillars over on that. Ed's working on that force right now. And then what that's going to do is allow us to get all of our stories in one place. Cause right now we've got equipment. I'm talking about balls and bats and volleyballs and everything, flag football stuff, either Memorial Field or at the shed or my office or the other place and it's all over and we just don't know what we have. So I think in the past they've just keep ordering stuff because they don't know what they have. So we're going to get that all enclosed, which will also allow us to get our janitors closet, our paint room organized where that's what's there and not paint in four different places. So that's, that's a project we're working on. And the Tabor freshman came out and helped with several projects. If you go out there and notice the south side of the four tennis courts, the trees have been trimmed up about so high. Um, and then on the south side, they've been trimmed back or north side, they've been trimmed back from the courts. So one of Dell's guys come and helped us with that. Brandon helped us with that. So it looks a lot better. Even today at the meet, some of the people who've been here the past several years said, wow, that looks a lot different. Looks a lot better. So we'll keep working on that. They also went to the park and picked up a bunch of branches and they're the ones that did the Lenseed Oil there. Um, they worked the tennis courts with doing the wind screens and painted the metal part of the benches out there. Uh, the sports complex, they helped me do some things there, move some things around, then went to the museum and helped Sue uh, move some things that she wanted to get out so she could clean up and put on display. She just couldn't move it. And so there's so much stuff there, they had to move some stuff to get the stuff out. So she thought that was pretty cool. Then she got to give them a history lesson on some of the Hillsborough stuff there.
That checks out, yeah.
So, um, a couple of other things I'm, I'm looking at doing, I've talked with Matt about some of these is possible moving that high school softball fence in. Kind of like Tabor did theirs, because right now they, I mean, they play on a fence that you put up temporarily that falls over. It doesn't look good. We don't really use a three-hundred-foot fence that much. We still would have one filled with three-hundred-foot fence, but it would give our high school team and even our rec teams a little bit better field to play on. Um, so we may look at doing that. If we do that, my, these are my dreams. I'm hired to do things, right? I mean, that's what I'm supposed to do, so I'm going to dream and do things and we'll see if they get done. But I'm going to put pickleball courts out there. Uh, right now, uh, it's hard to get on these courts down here that we've taped off. Um, and I've been asked by some people for saying volleyball court out there or two. My goal is to make that complex a place where families can go and play and do whatever and spend time together. Um, so those are some things I would like to do out there. We have the room and the space. Um, some more tree removal, some dead trees, some planting of some new trees. Um, out there also, my dream is to put a putt-putt course in and that's going to be down the road, I'm sure. But hey, why not try to get it done? Um, and a dog park, um, I did see somebody today when I was leaving, had their dog out there and then went bathroom, didn't pick it up and I was already leaving and. Ah, so, but if we had a dog park, I've got a spot that I think we could put it in out there that would be good. I've had, have people ask me for that. So, um, and, uh, Memorial Field is something that we're going to really work on. Uh, that can be a really neat field. Um, it's just kind of been, it's just getting older, some of the, the facilities and everything. The dugouts need work, the fence needs some work. So we're going to start working on that and cleaning that all up really good. Uh, we have some projects there. I'm, I'll probably put a committee together, some people I know that have an interest in that, that we can get together and, and look at that. We're looking at some after-school programs, which I should say, uh, we hired Andrea Sneed to take Kara's place. So she's going to be our director of aquatics, so she's going to run that pool. She's very excited. I talked to Todd today about getting with her on when they're going to go drain it, so she can go learn all that. She wants to go learn how to run a pool, what all is involved. So, um, she's going to do that and she helps me as well. So she's gonna, we're going to talk about some after-school programs. Um, so yeah, those are the projects. And then the other thing I'm trying to get put together, I'm dealing around with a little bit as a, called a corporate cup. Um, I'd like to do something between our businesses here in town where it's kind of a fun challenge. Maybe one month we have a weekend or a day of bowling and you get points. And then the, maybe you have a golf, you know, golf outing, disc golf, you have pickleball in the summer. You have some, you know, cornhole and different things to make your businesses kind of compete against each other, just to have it fun. Something for the adults more in our community maybe to do. We've got a lot of kid programs. So those are some of the things that I'm, I'm looking at, just a few, but, um, I want to try to get some things done and going, so. Ran that kind of quick, I think about fifteen minutes. So you guys have any questions at all? Any thoughts? Am I missing anything? Have you guys heard anything we need to add? Not add?
My head is spinning.
Probably a lot, yeah. My head's spinning too, but.
Nice, got it. Got it under control.
I did, uh, it looked like this morning when I was going fire yesterday that there was maybe some branches down.
At? There's, there's a hard tree in the park.
Yeah, that, I did, yeah, that, well, last Thursday I got home late, so I went down there and I checked and there's a bunch of trash blowing all over the place. So I didn't, the one dumpster was overflowing, the one two feet from it was completely empty. So I went and picked all the trash up I could gather in the dark and threw it in the other one. Went down the next day, because we left in the morning, um, went down early the next morning, checked all my irrigation and there was that big tree that split. Um, and, cause Todd said, hey, if you'll go around after storms and tell me, wouldn't come get them down. So I sent him the message. I said, so we go look, here's this tree. I sent him a picture of it. He said, we'll probably just have to knock it down that day because it was way too wet to get any equipment in there. But he said, we'll go down and get it knocked down. So I need to go down there now and see if they've actually knocked it over and picked it up. But yeah, it was split. Part of it, so I went down there and pushed the part to, the thin part, it's still on the ground pretty good, but I didn't want to fall on anybody, so. He was going to go.
I don't think it's been picked up yet.
Okay, it's been pushed over, okay.
Yeah, I don't think it's down.
Yeah, so at least that way it didn't fall on anybody. So trying to get in the habit of things like that, just program myself, hey, there is a storm, run through the park in the morning. You know, things like that. Pick things up, do different things like that.
Do we, what, what about the shade structures on that middle?
That's on my list to do. I've done that. I'm not, I don't, I don't know why that's not done, but I want to do the shade structure there. We've talked about a shade structure at, at Memorial. Uh, we need to do that. Um, and then we got to get all of our signage updated on all the fields out there. You'll see all the ads. So what we're going to be doing is digging in there, it's like the bowling alley. We need to dig in there and figure out what ads, um, are there as well. Cause are, are the businesses even still in, in operation?
Right.
Um, which ones haven't paid the, we need to take down or which ones we send them bills to? So all those signs and things like that are all on the list to do, but yep, shade structure needs to get done on that field, that's for sure.
Very good. Any questions?
Anything else for anybody?
Thank you very much, David. We're excited to have you on board.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yep.
Thanks.
Thanks, David.
Okay, we will now move on to our business section and we've got a few items there to deal with tonight. First up is consideration of pay application number three for the CGBG grant, the daycare project. Mr. Stiles?
Yeah, it's just the, the third in our series, so it kind of continues to move forward. This one's for two hundred and seventy-six thousand, three hundred. Uh, we'd report that things are moving along pretty well with the daycare project. I've only hit a couple of snags here and there. There's been some issues with the, there, there's a front office addition at the front of the building and there's some issues with, uh, the trusses and kind of how they're arranged. And so they had to get a little creative with that. Um, but other than that, and then there's been a few other issues here and there, and there's some debate about what to do in the basement exactly. But, uh, the board will be kind of reviewing some of those things and, uh, keep moving forward with it. But, uh, I think everything in here is appropriate as far as the work has been done. Um, so I'd recommend moving forward with approving it.
Any, any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize payment of pay application number three for the CDBG daycare project. Councilman McCarty moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Next is consideration of another pay application. Next is consideration of another pay application number two for the Adams Street project. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So this is kind of catching us up on payments for that project as well. After we got the KDOT agreement approved and put in place. So now we can charge onto that grant, those grand dollars. This one is for eighty-nine thousand, five forty-one seventeen. This is for the work that they finished with all the curb work and the intersection. And I think there's also some engineering in this one too. But yeah, so that, that one, all that work's been completed already. Would note that they are, we are out to bid for the the water portion of this project and the sanitary sewer too. And so those, those bids will be coming back in hopefully. I think it's at our next meeting, we'd be scheduled to look at those. Those would be additions to this project, but there's a lot of room left in it based on what the bids came in at. So not a problem there. Bots is gonna be back, I think, the twenty-third, the week of the twenty-third to get the rest of the work on the street done. They'll start the south half. So they'll go from B Street South there to, to take the hit Tabor and, or A Street South to B, excuse me, to finish that section out first, and then they'll move on to the north piece. So the water and the sewer pieces can happen simultaneously with that. They're gonna bore all the water. And the sewer is actually pretty small, so it's not a huge, huge piece of that. So everything's good here. We're recommending approval at eighty-nine thousand, five forty-one seventeen.
Any questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to authorize payment of pay application number two for the Adams Street project. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second? Councilman Bye seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. We will now move on to item three, which is a consideration, the memorandum of understanding with the Hillsborough Rec Commission. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So yeah, what you have here is a, an MOU with the Rec Commission. Of course, they have their own board and the city provides all the financial support, all the bookkeeping, everything for that. We also provide, David, we, we pay for all that. He runs their programs for them and he does the work for the Rec Commission, sort of acts on their behalf. He's, he's the main staff person who staffs their meetings. But Danielle and Krista primarily do a lot of work on the backside to make sure all that happens appropriately. There's about, we estimated, we kind of took, you know, obviously it ebbs and flows. It's about two hundred and fifty hours a year is sort of what we figured. And so we went to the Rec Commission a couple of months ago and said, hey, look, we've got this. We'd like some assistance with this because financially it does get to be a bit of a burden for us as we do it. You know, it's been this way for years. We understand that. But helping us offset some of those hours with a little bit of extra cash would be helpful on our financial, financially for us. So we just took that and we multiplied out by twenty dollars an hour, sort of a rough number. It's not quite right, but it, you know, it's, it's something, it's affordable for the commission. So they took it up at their last meeting, which was in August. They approved that after they approved their budget for next year. So it came out with forty-eight hundred dollars, which is gonna give us roughly two hundred and forty hours up to two fifty, sort of put it that way to give us a little bit of room there. Through-year term, reevaluated after that. Of course, they could dismiss it if they wanted to. There's an out clause with that. It's, it's a really basic MOU. We're probably never gonna not do their stuff for them because they just really don't have the capacity to do it. But if they chose to, they could. They're a public body just like you and they're, they're officially sat and they can do that kind of thing if they want to. So that's sort of why we went with the MOU. It's a real basic deal. And so the Rec Commission again has reviewed this. They've approved it. So we're bringing it to you for your consideration.
Questions?
So everything before this MOU was just done for free with using staff time and all that. So it's just a way to
Kind of compensate back a little bit for that. There's a lot of work, especially in the summertime. There's, there's these really big, heavy periods. And then there's times when we're not doing, near as much. And so yeah, it's just kind of a way to balance that out a little bit.
No, we can't.
Yeah, you can't lock it.
Well, there's an open door there. All right, we'll try to keep it down.
Okay. Having, having a fire department meeting about the, actually the fire station.
Yeah.
Officers meeting.
My son said that.
Okay. Any questions? I think it's a great, great deal and it's a, it's a good way to, you know, help us on our side of the budget too. So it just, again, implies the partnership. And I think with the reorganization of the Parks and Rec department, you know, we've really increased our bandwidth, so to speak. And, you know, so it's kind of nice to have them step up and, and participate in that process. All right, hearing, hearing no other questions, I would accept a motion to approve the memorandum of understanding with the Hillsborough Rec Commission. Councilman Wilkins moves. Is there a second? Councilman Bye seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye. Opposed, motion carries. And now we come to consideration of the purchase of an eighteen KVA standby generator for the electric shop. Which was, no pun intended, kind of shocking.
Highly ironic.
That the electric department doesn't have electricity when the power goes out.
Yeah. That's exactly right. We, they don't. And yeah, that's an issue when you have automatic doors and giant automatic doors. So they can't get in, get their equipment to go out to service everything. They've got a little workaround that they're able to do, kind of break into their own facility, then manually pull everything out and try to lift it till they can get power back on. What this would do would be allow them to, you know, at least get to their equipment. It's backup standard, yeah. Standard generator, they would actually do all the work to it. So, so it's no big deal there. It's, it's a ten thousand, five hundred dollar purchase. It will also be subject to sales tax. I didn't figure that on there. We're just asking for the purchase of the backup generators. For, for their electric department shop. Yeah.
And this would be bought from?
Elcon. Yeah, from Elcon.
Now, this won't give Dale any power at his shop.
None on this one, sorry. Probably could be worked out, yeah. If anyone's gonna be able to, it'd be the electric guys.
Well, it would be nice to have that whole facility out there, that, everything out there that we have, you know, just saying.
Yeah. Look at that too.
Because I'm sure Dale would need, may need to get equipment out of his, out of his area as well. Or get into it so that he can repair equipment. Anyway. All right, any questions?
Yes, I, I do have one. So since we're getting it from Elcon, there shouldn't be any type of issue with supply or any type of backorder or anything, right?
No, I don't think so. I think this is pretty standard off-the-shelf kind of thing. So I don't know the lead time. I'm sure there is one.
Yeah.
I don't anticipate it being months out or anything like that.
Elcon is actually a factory certified repair.
Yeah, they're a Generac dealer.
Dealer and a, and service. They can do service on it too. Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the purchase of an eighteen KVA standby generator for the electric shop. Councilman Bye moves. Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. We will purchase the generator. Number five, we are at consideration of the purchase of asphalt not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. And I know Mr. Dahlke and his crews have been very busy doing some, what looks like some pretty good street work. I haven't had a chance to get up there, but I'm excited to do that and see what you guys have been doing. So, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, actually Dale's here to kind of talk a little bit about it, but we've, we've got a proposal in there for, yeah, for the, for not to exceed a hundred and eighty-eight tons, not to exceed thirty thousand. I did purchase for eighty-four tons, which is nine thousand, it's up to the ten thousand spending limit I have. But you know, we started talking about it, we need to really think about it as a whole project. And so we're bringing it to you to talk about going for the full amount there. Dale's provided a list of kind of what he's planning on doing with that. As far as financially, where's it come from? It comes from the special highway fund, which is gas tax to get from the state. Specifically designed to go for road maintenance. So this fits right into that. At the end of, at the beginning of August, we had about ninety-six thousand in there. So there's plenty of room to, to do that. Lots of spending authority as well. So I shouldn't have, shouldn't have any issues financially with it as far as asphalt repair goes. It's like this larger, a little larger volume than we normally do. But I would defer to Dale to answer any questions about the specifics of where, when, and all that.
Say something. So yeah, the streets I got planned. We already did North Lincoln. It had been kind of tore up a little bit since they put those duplexes in. And we finally patched it. We had had some gravel down things and that sufficed for a while, but we, we sealed it off with some asphalt. And we did North Birch. It's been a little tore up from some utility cuts and just wear and tear, normal wear and tear on the street. Plan on doing West B between Ash and Birch. It's more like a Jeep trail than a street right now. Cedar and Birch also, very rutted up and some bad spots, not the whole street. Well, the whole street's bad, but we're probably gonna hit specific areas on those streets. All the way from D to Grand, not the whole area, but here and there. Even a little bit on Willow Road possibly, South Washington and Elm, North Elm. I don't know that this amount will, it won't quite get all those streets, but that's the ones on the list and we'll see how far we get. The only drawback about getting, taking this out of special highway is then that means less money for chip sealing next year. Planning, I was planning on doing a big chip sealing for next year. We've said, we haven't chip sealed last year, this year. So but I mean, it'll get used for the streets. Got to patch them before we can chip seal.
Right. Very good. Any questions from Mr. Dahlke?
How would that affect the grant process that we were doing with, like what we were doing with Adams Streets? Was that, well, I mean, don't we have plans to do like?
Like a CDBG?
Yeah.
Uh, no, I mean, some of these streets, they need immediate action.
Okay.
And so this is just patching. This ain't making them new. You know, it, it might last for years, depending if we get the grand or not. But but they need some.
Okay, true.
I know John, they got a lot of nice compliments on all the nice comments people made about the streets on Facebook. People really appreciate it. What's good?
I guess I had.
And how long does it take to, to, to do all that with, with that amount of asphalt to do?
Maybe about a block a day. And then so we did not quite three blocks with the amount we already got. So you could maybe do, I'm just gonna say six blocks, plus or minus.
Any other questions? Hearing none, I'd accept a motion to approve the purchase of asphalt not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Bye seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. We will purchase the asphalt and Mr. Dahlke, keep up the good work.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
I tell you what, that's some of the, streets are always some of the most visible things that people see when they think about what we do, you know, at the city. And so we really appreciate it.
We do have a lot of good streets. We have some that are so-so, but we have a lot of good. Thank you.
We now have consideration of a revision to the municipal policy number eighty-one regarding cell phones. Mr. Styles?
Thank you, sir. So yeah, this is a revision of, of policy eighty-one, which is original, it's two thousand and ten, so it's been a minute. What it basically says in, in the original policy, the intent was to try to get people as many, as many people off of city-issued cell phones as possible. I think the issue was equipment costs and those things. So what this did was move everybody over to a, you know, a twenty-dollar stipend if you use your cell phone, forty dollars if you use data. I would tell you, everybody uses data now because we text all the time. That is one of the best ways we get people and, and we communicate and we also use a lot of email. So that's just sort of how it's worked. Chief Steckity is the only one who actually has a city-issued phone, and that's sort of a holdover. So that's, that was kind of the state of play is, is what that policy is written at that. But some, some public safety issues have kind of come up recently. There's been some advice because there's been an uptick in subpoenas. And so if, you know, a police officer is using his personal device, which we're providing him forty dollars a month to do. And he's using, you know, that device for official work, it can be subpoenaed. And so it can end up, you know, disappearing for a while. And that could be his personal phone. And they, you know, there's a fear that they could use information that's personal information against somebody. Now, there's, there's pretty narrow parameters on a subpoena. So I don't know how real that part of it is. But it was, it was an ask from the public safety people that we reconsider that. And so Chief Hebert and I talked about that and we made this revision here, which would allow for the fire chief and then also public safety people to opt to choose to do a city-issued cell phone so that they don't have to use personal cell phones. And therefore not exposing themselves to that risk. And made, it made sense to me. I mean, I, I understand kind of how that is and the way, the way the environment is anymore, I can understand it. I also added an additional point there that would authorize the city administrator to issue a city-issued cell phone and leave a stipend for extenuating circumstances. So we've had situations come up, not frequently, but where it may be beneficial to not have somebody using their personal phone. Some examples that I've heard of, we haven't had here, but like a domestic violence situation. Where somebody's got their number out there, it's a personal number and people are using it for work. There could be some harassment issues. Doesn't happen often, but we want to be able to have a, a space for that too, in case it needs to happen. So that's what this does for the policy. These are city-owned phones. Anyone who gets one of those, the owner receives the stipend. So that's kind of the trade-off there. And the rates pretty much wash out from what we can get them on. We use Verizon for the public safety stuff. It's got the best track record. We get tower preference. There's a really good deal on handsets. They generally do a pretty good job with Verizon as far as what that is. And when they deploy to certain situations in Kansas, it's a Verizon service that gets deployed because of its reliability. So that's kind of where it is with, and that's why we use it. PD's proposing if, if they, if this was to go through, that they, they could get access to iPhone fourteen, which is totally fine. That's very serviceable phone. They're totally free for them. So that would be kind of where they would go. There would be no equipment costs and the wash is basically the, the cell plan versus the stipends. So.
Questions?
Yes, I do. Is there any type of language that could be put in addressing any type of potential misuse of the city upon itself? Or like, you know, don't give it out to other people, you know?
Yeah.
That just to cover any type of situation, someone were to come on and, you know, let their best friend use or anything like that. Yeah.
We do have, we have an existing policy about the use of city property, which probably could apply to that. There's nothing specific to cell phones, as you can see in here. That's certainly something that we could step back and put in. That's something that you prefer to see. We could do that.
Well, I mean, if, if you think that the city property one will cover it, I mean, I guess we don't have to be redundant with it. I just.
That one's written pretty broadly. This would be city-owned property. And so that falls in the same category as like city equipment. That's how I would view that. And so I think, I think you could enforce it that way.
Okay.
And not really have to get too granular, I guess.
Well, yeah, no, that's fine with me. How many phones are we, are we talking about?
We'd have full-time officers, which should be five. Yeah, just five and then Ben.
Okay, that's.
Six total.
What about insurance or damage to the, to the phones? How is that gonna be covered?
Yeah, it gets covered through Verizon. We use them right now for I don't know if the iPads are some, there's a couple of iPads, I think, on there. And then we have some on TCW too. And then we also have, they're called jet, jetpacks? Jetpacks, which are mobile hotspots that we use for the MDTs. So it's all covered under that. And that's another benefit with Verizon is that they cover that for public. Isn't they cover that for public safety people?
Okay, good. Cause that's what I was thinking about. They get in situations where they could probably easily get damaged.
Yeah, I've seen it happen just about every, every place I've worked at, we've had numerous cell phones destroyed. And it's usually I dropped it at a fire scene or I got in a chase with somebody and it went. Ran it over with the car one time. Yeah, I've heard them all. I mean, that happens.
Oh, I figured it would.
Yep, especially with this group. I mean, they're notorious. And that's why, you know, Verizon has, I think it's an eight month replacement schedule with these two, so they could upgrade their handset every eight months, I think. Just for that.
Very good.
Yeah.
Okay, any other questions? Comments? Hearing none, uh I would accept a motion to uh adopt the revision to municipal policy eighty-one regarding cell phones. Councilman Jorgensen moves. Is there a second?
One second.
Councilman Wilkins seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we have consideration of a job description for the AP payroll clerk position. Mr. Styles?
Sure. So this is an update to the current position. Um what we did in this is, and Danielle actually made a lot of these adjustments. So I I will defer any specific questions you have to her. Uh but we have, we've added the stuff for the recreation commission on there. Um and so some of those things at the recreation commission uh we do. Uh this person attends, it's actually Krista Recker is the person in that position right now. She attends the rec commission meetings and maintains their files and does their minutes and. Uh well, actually, no, I take that back. Bob, Bob Welk does the minutes. Uh he's her secretary. Uh but then we also added quarterly reports, uh some annual reporting things in here too. And some, some language on benefits management is also a little bit different here too. So I would defer to you to add anything to.
Yeah, uh the other item that I would highlight is the tracking purchase orders. That's something that takes a lot of time and I felt really confident in Krista's ability to be able to pass that off. And so that's somebody coming into the office saying, I need a purchase order to buy this every time something's over a hundred or seven hundred dollars. And so that's helped significantly um free up some of my time and just, I suppose updating this acknowledges that she is taking on more than what we had initially hired her to do. Um and so want to make sure that her description reflects that.
Questions? Hearing none, I would accept a motion to uh um adopt the revised job description. For the AP slash payroll clerk position. Councilman Wilkins moves.
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Um we now have Hillsborough Ford invoices totaling four hundred and twenty-five dollars, twenty-five cents.
Yeah, this is just a service on the nineteen bucket truck. So you've got your oil change, inspection. Uh fuel filter, it looks like cabin air filter, engineer filter. So pretty basic maintenance stuff. Yeah, so pretty basic.
Can I ask a new guy a question?
Yeah, sure.
How come we always do these separately than other?
Because Mr. Bai works for Hillsborough Ford and rather than put that, he doesn't, that way he doesn't have to abstain from all the other vouchers.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Good question.
It is a good question. And sometimes, you know, once you, once you do something and then you just kind of, just assume everybody gets it, you know, that why we're doing it.
Yeah.
But that's very fair. Any other questions? Hearing none, then I'd accept a motion to adopt or approve for payment the Ford invoices totaling four hundred and twenty-five dollars and twenty-five cents. Councilman McCarty moves. Is there a second?
Second.
Councilman Jorgensen seconds. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those abstaining?
Abstain.
All those opposed? The motion carries, the invoices will be paid. Now we're into a couple of discussion items. Mr. Styles? First up is a Parkside sign request.
Yeah, this is kind of a unique one. Um Parkside Homes had called me. Uh they are interested in. Uh potentially moving their sign. Um and so they have uh an individual is interested. Well, there's a couple layers to this. Interested in in buying those duplexes, which are basically condemned. Uh on the corner there of of Willow Drive and Ash Street. Um and they want to take those out and then build in some new um town homes. I guess is what you call a patio home, that type thing. Um in order to do that though, one of the things that the the person requested was that Parkside, their sign. Uh and so they reached out to me, still wanting to keep a a presence on Ash Street and said, hey, would it be possible? Uh for us to move our sign to the city owned property across the street, city right away, basically. Um owned by the Gaul, it's on a golf course, sort of tucked behind a tree if you were to go straight across. Um and would that be possibility? Would that be something that you guys would be uh interested in open to to having a conversation? So I took a look at it and I told her, well, you know, I I can't make that decision. That's a city uh council level decision. They've got to look at um. Kind of what that does and of course, obviously city property and you know, it's an off premise sign, so there's some things to think about there. But this is kind of the intersection we're talking about. It's a little blurry. Uh these are the, the duplexes there that are in obvious disrepair. You can tell by the picture even. Um they had some trees growing up on there and nasty. We, they needed to go for a while. Um so this is the monument sign and I I included a picture in the, a report. It's not real big. Um so what they're suggesting would be to take and move this sign directly over here. Uh so it's still, you know, directional, uh which seems to fit into the sign code. You can do directional signs. It's not an advertising sign. Um it's more of a wayfinding sign, although it is a monument sign. Um so all those things kind of fit together and of course, the sign code has size restrictions, which this does fit under. So it, you know, doesn't really do much with the sign code. That's a problem. Uh the situation is, you know, is it something the city is willing to allow on their property? So yeah, that that's kind of the gist of it, you know, is, you know, do we, are we willing to do that? Uh for them to, as they can have, you know, maintain that presence and still have a directional sign. It probably wouldn't go exactly straight across. It'd probably go a little bit south. So that people coming up to Willow Road would be able to kind of see it and make that turn. Um uh there's, there's some concerns there, I guess, about the precedent you would set by doing that. I don't know that you're gonna, uh this pretty unique situation. There's not a whole lot of other opportunities where this would come up. But um it has in the past when we talk about, you know, signs in city right of ways, that's always an issue. We have a ton of them that end up showing up up here at Ash and D Street. Um and so we've kind of been policing that. It's usually temporary signs. Um you know, if it's something that's not permanent, sometimes we, and it's after hour, we don't grab it right away, you know.
But go back down to uh um then follow your cursor around Willow Road. Right there on that corner, that first corner.
Right here?
There was also a sign that blew over multiple times and they've never put it back up and reinforced it. And I mean, that's sitting, well, I think that is technically their property. Right there on.
Oh, right here.
Right there, yeah. There's a base, I think, still there.
There is still a base there, yeah.
So, you know. They've, I guess my question is they've lived without.
That sign.
That sign for a long time.
Yeah, at least four years.
Um so I, you know.
Yeah, well, that, yeah, and then that's the, that's kind of the discussion here. I mean, is it?
Why do they have to move the sign?
Uh the person who wants to do this, wants that sign moved as part of the deal. Now, I would say the other layer to this is that that is part of their industrial revenue bond property. So that we would have to go through the process, much like we did um last year uh for this farm property that they sold. Um so you'd have to go back through that process and they're aware of that. Um you know, obviously it's, it's worth it to them to continue. Thinking about it from that perspective. And obviously, it's something we have an interest in seeing too, because we've honestly. We're very close to just condemning that property anyway and making them tear it down. Um we just have never done that because at one point, uh five or six years ago, um they asked about doing that. And uh the powers that be at the time said, no, you can't do that because it's tied with this IRB and it's part of the collateral. Which I totally understand that argument. It is. Um obviously, that asset has deteriorated to the point where it has no value whatsoever. To the, the overall value of the property, really. It's probably a hindrance, so. Um yeah, so those are kind of independent questions. But yeah, the signage is, do we want to make a carve out for the signage there?
Would it, would it affect the golf course at all?
No, I think it's tucked away enough that it's not really gonna affect the golf course. And one thing we have talked about, at least Dale and I have, is is extending sidewalk up the side. And so that would be a problem.
Right.
You'd have to have the sidewalk go around it then.
Yeah.
Who picks up the cost for the move?
They would have to do all of it. That's what I told them. Like, we're not paying for any of it. Um if they need electricity, because right now it's lit. Uh they'd have to come off one of these light poles here and drop a transformer. Uh you know, it wouldn't be cheap, but. You know, it'd be something they'd have to do.
We probably have to do something with that. You know, I remember, I I go by there every day, but set up both sides.
The sign is, yeah.
Yeah, Harold would be okay.
Yeah, you just pick it up and move it.
Okay.
They'll be fine.
Yeah, they may have to move it because of the, you know, it's a sidewalk thing. It'd be coming up something.
No, I'm not saying that's imminent.
Yeah.
They're not doing it next week or anything.
No, I mean, I have a problem.
There's sidewalk on, there's sidewalk on the other side, right? Or is it limited?
Yeah.
Yeah, there's sidewalk on this side of the street.
That's right.
Yeah, I mean, that, I mean, this tree right here is basically the start of the golf course. I mean, there's fifteen, twenty feet probably. Maybe a little more than that. I don't know. I'd have to measure it, but.
What is the setback requirement? What is it setback right now? Do we know?
Um it's setback, I believe it's ten feet off of the street. Uh I can't see my tools.
Traffic safety, I would think it has to have some.
It does. It has a, I'll measure that. Uh zero miles. How about that?
Nice.
Uh a little over sixteen feet. That's probably closer to the bunny.
Probably bunny.
Yeah.
I wouldn't have a problem with it, but I think I would agree with you that it could set us precedent for other people doing the same thing.
Yeah, police department back, we had this other administrator. We had to go around and check every sign in town like that to make sure it wasn't on city property because somebody complained and that takes a lot of work.
Yeah.
And it was kind of Mickey Mouse, but we had to do it anyway. I thought that, yeah, something we had to do. So I, I mean, people did gripe about it. Then they complained about one sign, a guy had to, had to move it. Then he complained about every other sign in town. So then they had to go around and check every sign in town.
This is, this is the can of worms years ago, opening.
Yeah.
So I will, I will say that the previous sign to this, that it was lit with a photoelectric eye.
You could put it out.
Yeah, and you could, us kids could drive our car and point our headlights at it and turn it off.
That was a thing to do, wasn't it?
Yeah. I'm not gonna say there's nothing to do in the old school.
No, I know, yeah.
Yeah.
That was exciting.
Spotlight knocking out too, you know, so you want to bring your spotlight along.
Not that our PD would ever do something like.
No, I never did that. I would not do that.
So if we said no, are there any other alternatives that they thought of on this?
Uh no, I don't know if they've gotten that deep into it. Honestly, they were kind of just doing fact finding with the, some is, obviously this deal. I I would highly doubt that it would scuttle anything. It seems like a big enough deal, you know, even if they didn't have that sign, at the end of the day, I'm not sure that that would be. The end of, end of the world for them, but. You know, and I, I get their, I get the logic. They want to continue to keep some sort of presence on that and they can drive people to it. Um you know, their competitor up here, you know, obviously their, their signage is right here, as you can see it. Um of course, their orientation is different. The building is different. Everything's different. So it's just not quite the same. Yeah, I don't know. I mean, I, the alternative, I guess, would be that they would have either no sign or they'd work out some sort of deal here.
Again, keep in mind, this is a discussion item. This is not a, this is, we're not at a decision point yet.
About it, like some of them street signs that show where the businesses are and stuff. How about one of them might work too? It's kind of a big.
Yeah.
Brick.
Yeah.
You know what I'm talking about?
Yeah, we've got up here.
Coming the other way.
Yeah.
We're gonna go and, we have one right here.
That might work.
We're actually in the process of replacing these because they're in awful shape.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Yeah, so this one right here is a way find, they're wayfinding signs. So they'll point to um Tabor College.
School.
The school, the stadium downtown, depending on where you're at, you know, it points that way. So I mean theoretically, if you wanted to be super nice and generous, you could put one here and say. Parkside Homes and then Salem Home that way too. I don't know. Could do that.
Aside from the detriment of the cost that the city would take putting that in, the benefit of doing that over. Having to put their own sign in is you'd have complete control over it. They put their own sign in, we gotta give them an easement and then. They have, you know, they take care of it, but essentially it's their sign. Put in one of those wayfinding signs, at least. It's a city sign. It's not their property. We can do with it as we please anytime in the future.
I'd be willing to bet they pay for that too.
Yeah, there's.
Salem would help too.
Maybe.
I'm guessing that uh that sign would fit right on that base over there on that other corner.
Oh yeah, you could take that sign and move it right over here for that empty base.
I bet it would fit right there.
That is their property. We did check that. I bet that one.
All right.
Wayfinding.
Any other comments or discussion on this item? If not, we'll move on to uh number two, which has a little more meat on the bone, which is the city of Lehigh's. Fire service request, Mr. Styles?
Yeah, this is an interesting one too. So um City of Lehigh clerk contacted our office. We send out uh. Invoices to our, our partners we have in our fire district. Uh so we have multiple townships and then the city of Lehigh, one of our, our, our people too. Uh of course, we've invited them to all of our meetings and they, you know, constantly have done that. And uh they said, you know, they just haven't been showing up. So they never gave us any kind of indication as to why or what, what the reasoning was or anything like that. But uh the City of Lehigh clerk contacted us saying they were, they were withdrawing from the agreement and they weren't gonna pay the charges for twenty twenty-four. Um so I tried to contact her back and the mayor to say, okay, well, here's, you know, here's the agreement that we have. And I I included that for you guys to look at too. Um as well as, you know, what the, the cost is. It's based on valuation. And then we take the amount that they are owed and there's a formula that we run it through for valuation. So everybody's charge is based on their valuation. So they get a different charge. Uh thirty-two hundred dollars is kind of what theirs was. So I sent them a copy of that and um. You know, we sent them another invoice to, hey, here's what it is. Uh the way you can get out of that is there's a twelve month notification period um in there. So, you know, if they were to do that, we would need some sort of notification. Apparently, they, they met a couple of weeks ago and had decided that they wanted out of that. And so um we kind of see the letter that they gave me. Uh it's just a handwritten thing on a sheet. So I guess that, that meets the requirements for saying we want out of it. And I, I had suggested to her like, well, you know, maybe if you want out of it, maybe we could look at some kind of prorating or something. I don't know. It just kind of depends. And I, the intention of that was to say, let's have a conversation about this and, you know, see what's, what the deal is. And are you capable of doing this? And what's, what's your situation? Obviously, they, the, their council feels like it is, they're more than capable of providing that service for themselves, which is great. That's totally fine. Uh we do have that notification, so I mean, you could take it as they wanted to do it for the entire year. And maybe they made that decision earlier, but never notified us. Or do we take it as the notification is this date in August? Uh they paid for the full twenty twenty uh four, so they came in and they paid that invoice. Just looking for a little direction on how you want me to handle that. Um you know, I, if you prorated it back to August. You'd be returning about a little over a thousand dollars to them if you do that. Uh you also say, well, it's a twelve month notification. Uh, you also say, well, it's a twelve month notification, so, you know, here it is, it starts on August, and then you know, you, you get through to next August, and we'd have this conversation again. So I'm looking for a little direction on how you wanna proceed with this.
Well, so legally, they still, they would still owe us for, I mean, because of the notification, and they'd still owe us for one, like another half a year or so.
August of next year, if you.
Yeah.
Well. The way it's written is, you, is you'll notice if you look at it closely, is it says that they'll use best, it says it's terminable under the act, which I didn't, I haven't had a chance to this, this Fire Protection Act. It says, but notwithstanding that, any party can, will use its best efforts to give twelve months notice, so. What I would suspect is, at the very, at the very most, uh, they may have to give us notice. Cash basis of budget law would say they can't be obligated for outside of the budget year anyway, so. At, at the most, we could hold them to is probably through the end of twenty twenty four. At the most, if the act says it can terminate on thirty days' notice, you know, I don't know, we'll have to go look at that, uh, but we put in the twelve months notice, just as a, hey, we're all trying to get along, so I don't know that we can count our fists and say, twelve months, absolutely.
So, have we been paid through December of this year?
Yeah, they paid the full invoice for it.
So that's probably the most we could really reasonably.
And what's the downside for us, is there any skin off our back, if, you know, they're, they're done, uh, end of the year?
Uh, no, I mean, we would just adjust, just our operation, um. They actually, they, they've got a pretty robust volunteer group right now, um, they'll probably come out and respond. Uh, uh, as a, a matter of, of firefighting, I think that they're a pretty good partner. Uh, you know, just this, this agreement would then just go away, so.
We wanna keep a good relationship with other cities too.
We'll still, we'll still provide mutual aid, I mean, if there's a big fire, we're going to help, I mean, we'll help, that's just the way it is.
Okay.
Just like when, uh, our church here burnt down, I can't remember how many different communities with units we had here, it's like, maybe nine different departments were here fighting that fire. So, yeah.
Pretty much everybody comes in a structured fire situation.
It's, it's really the three thousand some dollars we're gonna lose in, in annual revenue for our firefighting team.
Yeah, that just, that changes the calculation a little bit, but at the end of the day, it actually probably ends up coming back to us more than anybody else, as, as a city, cause we break that up. Total cost by valuation, so you remove their valuation, it's gonna just adjust everybody else.
They can pretty well handle anything now, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, I think so, well, they obviously think they can, and I, I think that. Yeah, Ben would agree with that, I don't think he has any problems, but, I mean, that's their decision.
Yeah.
Even if, even if we felt like they couldn't, it wouldn't matter. But, you know, I think that they're a very good fire, fire department, I think they have a lot of, you know, good quality people, and they've, they've shown up, so.
Good, yeah.
Yeah, I think they're a good partner.
If anything was gonna change, that's what I was.
Yeah, I don't think so, I mean, I think the, I think the mayor is actually on the fire department, and.
Yeah.
Yeah, so it's a, it's a robust department for the city of Lehigh.
Not like it was when we made this agreement.
Well, yeah, and the, the situation may have changed, you know, um, I can say they're probably, they're the only one that would have, would even try to stand the volunteer department up. Everybody else is a township, and maybe once, maybe twice a year, so. You know, and every, everybody we've talked to within the townships, just as, as point of fact, has been very complimentary of our service, and uh, when we meet with them every year, we try to meet twice a year, but basically told us last time, well, once is good enough for us, and just there's an issue, we'll tell you at the time, like, fair enough, we'll continue. Yeah, yeah, I think they're in decent shape.
So you said that we take them out, it'll just change the valuation for everyone else, so if we prorate them for the rest of the end of the year, would that affect, uh, everyone else's, or we just leave it?
No, we wouldn't change anybody else at this point, I mean, it's pretty well, pretty well set, there's four months left in the year. You know, a thousand dollars isn't good.
Yeah, yeah, I was just making sure that we wouldn't, you know, just, um, send everybody knows, hey, you're gonna have to.
Yeah, it's an extra hundred fifty bucks, yeah, nah, we wouldn't mess with that, that. We, we've got such a good relationship with all of them, I wouldn't.
Yeah.
Wouldn't think to do that.
So, so they sent us the check, have they asked for it to be prorated?
No, the only ask is what you have on that letter, which, uh, refers to, can we prorate it to August, which didn't. I don't know that they understood that what they were paying was for the full year, um, I think it's because it had a due date of the way we split those up is January and August, uh, for payments. And so it had on there an August payment, but I think they maybe thought that it was for August, through August, and that there may be some extra coming after that. Turn the check for what you owe to, up to August thirty-one, uh, would there be a way to prorate the rest, so I think there's a little bit of confusion there as to what they paid for. Cause what they paid for was the full year.
So this would mean, so they're paid through the end of the year, are they kind of asking to be refunded?
I think.
Back to, back to August?
I think you could infer that, not, it's not specifically that. Um, I think it's just an understanding that they're, they don't understand exactly what they've been billed for, so. Uh, we could clarify that with them, I don't have a problem doing that.
Is there, is there a sense from the council of what you'd prefer to just take the payment that they've given us, and, and tell them the, the agreement's gonna run to the end of this year, and that's it? Or to rebate them, uh, back to the end of, of last month?
I think maybe that'd be a good way to approach it, just for clarification purposes, and, you know, basically saying, well, it's not actually August thirty first. It is through the end of the year, what you paid us, so we can run the agreement through then, and, and then be done.
Done, yeah. Yeah, I can try to follow up with them, it's a little bit difficult, it's been difficult to communicate with them. Uh, I don't, I don't, I don't think that they have any regular hours or anything like that, so it's been hard, but um, and every time Kim has come in, I've not been here, so we get these notes handed back and forth, so. It's kind of how it's been, yeah, I can do that, that's no problem at all, I'll kind of find out from there.
That direction the council would, would give? Okay. Now we're on to your report, Mr. Styles.
Sure, um, so I just wanna follow up a little bit on the EPA, K H E lead copper survey, um, I would reiterate that we have almost ninety percent of this information already that is required in this, uh, we have to do a customer survey, and so that's going out this week. Uh, we are a little bit behind on that, we wanted to go a little earlier in August, but just didn't happen that way, so. Um, those will be coming out, people will have them by the end of the week, um, there's an opportunity there, they can fill those out online. Uh, the goal then is to then follow up with people, we don't get, we know we're not gonna get a hundred percent return on those, right, that is that is not gonna happen, that never happens. Um, but we'll, we'll make an attempt, a good faith effort to follow up with people, and then whatever information we don't collect, uh, will get marked as unknown. Uh, on the, on the survey sheet, uh, what I will tell you is that house, we have all that information already, like, we collected it back in two thousand and twenty, we did the water replacement. Um, so we have all that, we have almost all the information, meaning just not the interior plumbing information, which is what this customer survey will be. Um, so once you get that, we, we request everybody to take a look at that, and try to fill that out to the best ability. Uh, if they have an issue with trying to identify some of those things, we've included some pictures in there to help maybe clarify that, but uh, some people have mixed, mixed piping into your houses like mine, it's got mixed piping, there's packs, there's copper, there's some everything, right, so. We just ask people to fill out the best ability and get it back to us, put that information in there. Um, the, the thing with EPA is that, you know, they're the theoretical next step for them is, is to, um, they could potentially come down and, uh, compel somebody to change the piping within their house. Uh, I don't anticipate that being a real thing that ends up happening, but that's sort of the threat that's been out there and made, um, to be determined, but I can tell you that there's no, there's no letter copper in the actual system, in our distribution side. Uh, which used to be kind of the standard measurement, and this is an expansion of that, based on, uh, like the water crisis and plant and those things, so. Um, kind of see where that goes, but we will have this information turned in on time to the K D H E and EPA. Um, we're just asking people to finish those surveys for us as best they can.
Is that maybe why some people don't respond, cause they're afraid that they might have to replace their piping if it's?
Yeah, I'm sure that is, and I'm, I'm sure there's a lot of people that says, you know, EPA ain't gonna come into my house.
Um, that would definitely be me, I don't really like, uh, people trying to tell me what to do with them.
So, that's, that's pretty rough, I, I get the goal is, is noble and intention, you know, intention is great, um. Whether that actually works out in practice, who knows, and this has been delayed multiple times already, so. Uh, even collecting this information can be a little bit contentious, so we'll, we'll see how it goes.
I didn't know nothing about this, so I read that article, and then certain things like that.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, it's been out there, we've been talking about it for a couple of years, well, three or four years, actually, cause again, it's been delayed.
Yeah.
Handful of times too, so. We'll see, um, like I say, we've got about ninety percent of this information already collected.
Taking care of.
So, just, just for clarity's sake, since it was reported in the local press, I wanna make it clear that we are not outside the bounds of the requirements for this information to be provided. Correct?
That is correct, sir.
Okay.
We'll have it all collected and returned by October sixteenth.
So.
Which is the requirement.
Whether somebody feels like we are on time or not on time, we will be on time, and that's the end of the story.
Fair enough.
Hey, thank you.
Yep, problem. Uh, Bartle House, this is kind of a cool, this is a cool project, uh, the Bartle House is a recreation of Stone House, it was out in the, uh, I don't know exactly where it was, I'm not the best person to tell you the history of it. Uh, the museum has a lot of information on it, Kara and, and both Kara and Sue are really well versed in it. Um, but it's, you know, the, the house was taken down, stone by stone, and donated to the city. Uh, with, uh, all the stones have been out at the shop, at the street shop, and they're, they're marked, and there's a map to put them all back together and build it. Uh, that was thirty years ago, uh, so things aren't quite what they were thirty years ago. Uh, but the family's been working on, uh, raising the money over the last about a year and a half, uh, they've secured quite a bit of donations, a large amount of donations, and they've actually opted to privately finance the rest of it, so that's awesome, that's great, um. Uh, so what they're, we're working on finishing up all their plans and confirming all that, and they're gonna do some more walkthroughs, and then hopefully uh, go out and, and start trying to find some contractors for this project, so, um, we'll have some things, we'll have to make decisions on as a council, this is gonna be one of those things that gets bid out. Uh, it is an extremely specific type of construction, I will tell you that, so there's not a whole lot of people out there who are doing stone house construction from the eighteen hundreds, but there are a few, um, and so we'll have that, I would anticipate that construction maybe starting sometime at the end, before the end of the year, it just kind of depends, um, I don't know all the weather considerations for stone masonry, and kind of what that looks like, but, uh, we had a call about it today, so we'll, we'll see about it, but they, they've got the money raised, and they're gonna move forward, which is an awesome deal, so. Uh, for reference on where that'll be, it'll be south of Visitor Center, uh, right in front of the Community Garden location, so, yeah. It's not that big, um, I don't have the exact dimensions, uh, maybe a little bit bigger than that, yeah. Um, so it'll have HVAC, and it'll be, you know, climate controlled and everything, so we'll be able to do some exhibiting in there about the Bartle family and their, uh, uh, their history with missionary work in China, and it's really a fa- a very fascinating story. Um, and I am not doing it any justice, so, um, put a bookmark in that, we'll find some, somebody to tell you a better story on that. Uh, David mentioned bowling alley transition, so we got all that agreement and stuff at the title company, got the title commitment back last week, we're gonna do some of our due diligence inspections. Uh, get that closing on the schedule, I know that David's been working with Jackie Gage a little bit, um, we'll also have uh, a, a job description, we'll need to do job descriptions, those will have to be city employees after we kind of talk through that, so. Uh, maybe not quite as straightforward as we'd hoped it to be, and then, uh, we talked to the accountant for HTC, and uh, that was, that was somewhat helpful, and then, uh, we talked with our, our auditors about how that needs to be recorded, it will actually have to show up in our budget. Um, and we'll have to keep those in there, so Danielle and I are gonna work through what that looks like, and what that, of course, we're gonna have to amend the budget, and it's gonna be a whole thing, uh, but it's gonna be fine, we're gonna get it worked out, um, so those are gonna be city people. Um, and we're gonna get going, like David said, league starts next week, and he's got a ton of plans, we're actually looking at, um, a grant opportunity right now, to maybe redo some of that front room area, and, and uh, work with the Center for Entrepreneurship on a, kind of a pop-up retail store potentially, so. Uh, pretty cool, I, it's, it's gonna be a fun asset, it's gonna be an interesting, it's gonna be interesting, we've never, I've never run a bowling alley, I don't know anything about it. Um, but, we're gonna see how it goes, um, so, yeah, everything's moving forward with that. Uh, got the sales tax receipts there for you, we're trailing a little behind last year, about six percent year-to-date. Uh, county's portions were the drop spend the most, the city stayed pretty steady. Um, I'm anticipating we're gonna be about nine, forty-nine fifty, or nine hundred and forty-nine, hundred and fifty thousand this year, so it's down from the peak. Uh, which was a little over a million bucks in twenty twenty-two, but, uh, still steady, and still had, steady ahead of twenty twenty, so. Things are kind of keeping going there, we'll see if it picks up, there's usually a couple of months in there that spike, and we haven't really seen those yet, so. Um, it's kind of unpredictable, we'll see how it goes, but it's still holding pretty steady. Uh, wanted to bring a couple other things, um, we're gonna be rebooting, relaunching, I'm not sure how you say it, coffee with the mayor. Um, yeah, it's gonna be awesome, uh, Callie's worked on some stuff with that, got a new, yeah, she's put a lot of work into this. Um, they're actually gonna let us shoot at Rhubarb Market, like an on-scene thing, it's gonna be cool, um. Colin Hanson's gonna be our first person to get on board, hopefully we'll get him on. Uh, to come in, we're gonna record one in September, and then release it the last Friday of each month, that's the plan. Uh, so it'll be about Public Power Week, and what's coming up with that, so. You got anything to add to that, Lou?
No, I just, just, uh, we just, this is a lot of fun to see Callie's energy, and, and the thought that she's put into it, it's, uh, it's pretty cool, so, uh, I'm looking forward to it, and, and, uh, what I told Matt is, is we're gonna make it like, uh, New Heights, but without the F-bombs.
Set in the bar, set in the bar. Uh, last thing I would add, we had Plan Commission meeting last week, uh, Midnight Housing Zoning, uh, was on there for it's actually the land bank was on there, uh, to rezone that property, uh, so that, that went through a couple of things that came out of that, the, the guys from Ag. Um, Ag Service, Ag Power, uh, came and talked a little bit about their concerns with the project, they're very much in favor of it, but they wanted to make sure the drainage was considered, and so I'm sure they're gonna come and talk to you guys, that'll be on the agenda for next time for the approval of the zoning change. Um, so drainage is something they're concerned about, and then lights, actually, on their building, um, they're a little bit concerned about that, they want some sort of buffer. Not for them, but for the people, they were concerned that their lights may be too bright for people, so. Um, you know, there, I'm not sure what exactly, though, those are the things that we took away from that meeting, and so those are things that will be brought up, I'm sure, for consideration. None of which are a deal killer, we always talk about drainage, and we design something, and we will talk about, you know, buffering for uh, community members too, so those are things that are very addressable, but yeah, those are things that we're gonna talk about.
Um. Something, thought just came to my head when you mentioned, um, concern is about the flooding, uh, I guess potential flooding in that area. We did the, uh, that flood insurance, uh, survey, was that not considered because it was farmland at the time, or?
Yeah, any, any, well, anytime you develop something, um, you're adding more impermeable surfaces, and so, you know, roadways, rooftops, that kind of thing. Uh, the way that water drains through there, it kind of, according to them, it rushes pretty fast through there, and I, I don't doubt that, cause it's a pretty high elevation change from the top to the bottom, and it's real quick, so. Uh, you know, water rushes through there, you add more structures, you add more roads, water has less place to be absorbed, and so the solution to that is engineering, you engineer something into that, so ditchway, drainageway, some kind of, you know, tube system, depends on what you do. But lots of different ways to fix that, um, but yeah, that would be something, but it's not in a floodplain, so there's no imminent issue.
Just more of a precautionary thing.
Yeah, and, you know, and again, anytime you, you disturb the natural flow of something, it could change something, so you have to, that'll be something that'll be engineered.
If you've been down Lincoln Street in a heavy rain, since they put the Fine Arts Center in there, and all that grass that's now under a metal roof, all that water comes roaring out of that six-inch pipe on the Lincoln Street. And it gets bank full pretty quick. And it gets bank full pretty quick. So it's like that, you know. So you just have to, that was not engineered. Very well, I will say. But uh we have the opportunity here to be be out in front of that.
That's everything I answered.
Okay, any questions? Okay, we will now move on to our final public comment opportunity. Is there any? Members of the public that would like to address the council?
Well, um when I went down there to see the duplexes that's been allowed to decay. I was, you know, horrified that duplexes was allowed to decay. And I asked somebody about them and they said, well, it's because they would have had to put new bathrooms in them to make them rentable. For seniors, but I didn't know what year it was. And then I thought, well, couldn't they have created a separate entity to have rented them to non seniors? And not wasted the buildings and then. I am very well, we got all these other buildings decaying. Why single out one? Bad choice.
Which in particular duplexes are you referring?
The uh duplexes down there that that's Parkside duplexes that.
Got it.
But it's like I used to hear at work years ago, all buildings are predictions, all predictions are wrong. I mean, I don't know how many years in the future they would have had to guess to.
Buildings for long time, as a matter of fact, of duplexes, right?
Yeah, I mean, I talked to somebody older than me that talked about some relative of the. Quite a bit far back that used to live in them.
My wife's grandma used to live in one of them. Miss it harder.
Well, when we moved in about fourteen years ago, they were they were still occupied then. So it's been within the last fourteen years. Okay. Anything else, Jane?
Oh, that's the planning.
Okay. Appreciate, always appreciate your attendance. Okay, we will now close our final public comment opportunity and move on to council comments. Councilman Jorgensen? Councilman Wilkins? Councilman McCarty? Councilman Bye?
Where are we at on the building next to Dale's?
Good question. They, I believe it has changed hands. Dale was trying to purchase it. Um. And he was gonna get a quote from Marty Dahlke to demolish it. That's the last I knew about it. About to follow up with him.
Okay, that's all I got. Except the building to the west?
They bought it to expand their parking lot. We actually had a destruction order on it and foundation order, I should say. Year and a half ago, I guess. Two years maybe? Okay. And they sold it and so they were trying to sell it. We did end up taking it down uh because Dale said he was gonna buy it and take it down. So. To be to be determined when, I guess.
Actually, I do have a question. Well, what's the update on the email you sent us earlier in the week about the chase, police chase? Is there any? Thing else we need to know about that? Any other details?
Uh damage was less than we had thought. Um. There's definitely some conversation between the sheriff's office and the police department about how those chases need to be handled in the future.
Because they weren't on the same page really with that.
Nope, there was there were some issues there. Um. I think I think they're gonna resolve that between the two um between Jesse and Sheriff. So.
Hey. You had a question that I cut you off?
Sure. Oh, um this is a citizen question, but in my backyard, there's an abandoned house. Where the trees are overgrowing into where my backyard is. Well, what rights do I have that I can cut those down to keep them off my property?
It hangs over your property. You can cut that down.
Okay, well, needed to know.
And if you ever have a question, you can ask Matt or you can ask Ben. Then either one will be able to.
He does that more all the time.
Because it's getting, it's hanging over where my fire pit is.
Oh, yeah.
That's all I.
Okay. If is there any other business that needs to come before the council? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you.